It's called to order. Thank you very much. Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council setting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and Victorville Housing Trust. I have no cards. There is no one here to speak at this time. And so, roll call. Madam Chair, City Clerk.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias is noted as absent. Mayor Protem McEckern.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. At this time, we have a closed session item by the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There are two closed session items for the City Council this evening, both anticipated litigation. The first is pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9 E2, and it pertains to existing facts and circumstances, the SEC non-public investigation. The second is the potential of initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9 D4. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the close of the closed session or at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
At this point, at this time then, we will, if there's no further comments from Turn my mic on, they said. Earlier, we announced this was a regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council setting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers and Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. We went into executive session. We've returned from executive session. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There were two closed session items, anticipated litigation in accordance with Government Code 5495-6.9. The specific sections are set forth on the agenda, as well as a description of the matters. And at this point, there is no reportable action with respect to either item.
Would the City Clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias' absence is noted for the record. Mayor Protem McEckern.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Gil Allen of the Victor Valley Church of Christ to come to the microphone for the invocation. And please remain standing, and Victorville Police Chief Sam Luchia will get the pledge allegiance. Welcome, Mr. Allen.
Let's join our hearts together in prayer. Eternal Father, we are so thankful for the blessings that you have given to us. You have blessed us so completely. As we have gathered here in this comfortable chamber, our hearts go out to those who are in dire need and have great pain in the Boston Marathon, and we pray your blessings on all of the families that are suffering because of the tragedy that took place there. We're so thankful that we live in a land, though, that is free, a land where we can come together like this evening and discuss things that will make our city better. We thank you for these men and women who serve, and we pray your blessings upon them and their families. Bless us as we serve you. Help us to uphold your word. Help us to live as good citizens. Help us to be proud of our land and our city, and may we serve you well. We pray all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise Christ. Freddie begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Allen. Thank you, Sam. We don't have any presentations, no proclamations, no... Okay. Do we have additional items to the agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we do, Mayor Cox. On Agenda Items Number Seven and Thirteen, they're companion items. There is a request from the Director of Public Works to remove those items at this time. There is a revision on Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is a memorandum from Councilmember Vias to the City Council regarding the grand jury report and recommendations, and those are the only revisions that I have.
I only received tonight the comments from Councilperson Vias. City Clerk, was there a request included in the comments that you're aware of?
No, not that I am aware of. I have not read the entire report.
Right. We will discuss that when we get to Item Number Twelve then. Okay, so at this time, we have public comments. If you have items that, or if there's items on the City Council agenda that you want to discuss, you can discuss them now. However, we would prefer that you wait until that item comes before the City Council. But anyone can come and address the council at this time, and I have four cards. We had an earlier request from Mr. Chuck Hanson, and I agreed to recognize him when he shows up. We have three cards to address the council at the present time. Dorothy Miller, on Item Six, did you want to wait and address it at that time, or now? Norman Miller, Item Six, you're going to address it when we get to Item Six, is it correct? And Cheryl Thomas Perkins, you want to discuss Item Number Three, and that is the public comment, so if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, City Council, and city staff. I'm Cheryl Thomas Perkins, and the first item I wanted to discuss was the library, or just ask you what's going on with the library. You know, you get asked from time to time what's going on. I've had some informal discussions in the past couple of months with some who are friends of the library, as well as others within the city who applaud the fact that our library, I think, has the largest user ship than a lot of others in the area, which is a great thing. But I also know that the library is still kind of old and in need of a whole lot of work. I know we've done a lot of improvements over the past years, too, which is great. But I use it often. I usually try to get in and out quickly because it's kind of small and, you know, it kind of takes my breath away sometimes just going in there. So if there's someplace you can refer me to find out what's going on, or if you guys could let us know, or certainly let me know, if there are any plans for any further improvements of the library. The next thing I wanted to do was just restate my support for the naming of the Nisqually-Lamesa Exchange in honor of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I would hope that this body would honor the requests of those, especially from the previous City Council meeting, who sacrificed their time and came and addressed this body and gave passionate support mostly. I know there were some who did not support it, but the majority of those of us who were here last time around supported the naming. And I know that several times, some of you referred to others who were not here, I guess anonymous people, who did not support. But I thought that this was a forum where anyone with integrity and who has strong feelings about anything that has to do with the city would be here to make their voices known. So I would hope that those of us who do speak out, do show up, are given as much attention and consideration of our concerns as those who allegedly are not here but don't support it. And also, I'd like to make note that several people were offended. I managed to get my parents to engage in the process. They came to the meeting, and they hadn't been here to City Council for several years the last time they were here. As far as I know, it was when I was actually appointed by the then-City Council to serve on their Legislative Review Committee. And never before had they nor myself come to a City Council meeting and heard from one of our electeds such negative, mean-spirited response to our comments. And that's mostly from Mayor Protem. I thought that your mean-spirited, disrespectful comments were just an error.
Ten seconds.
So I think you owe us a public apology, and I hope that we, everyone would be able to be respected and respectable when we have differences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards that I have. I will state once again that we invite anyone to appear and speak to the City Council. I also would remind everyone that anyone can bring up any item. We will look into it. In regard to the library services, if you will call the front desk, City Clerk or the City Manager, they will direct you to the right individuals. But if it's not on the agenda, we can't engage in a dialogue, because all the people who didn't know the subject was coming up gets blocked out. And not to be argumentative, and please don't take my comments wrong, but we hear from a lot of people, and we hear from many, many, many people that want to talk to their elected representatives and make it clear that they are not going to come to the council meeting and be ridiculed or be treated disrespectful because somebody disagrees with their opinion. But we still hear them. Equally, we hear the people who show up. You all have an equal voice. But it's not the number of people who show up to speak to the council that's always in the majority. I hope everyone understands that. The card just presented, Mr. Ruben Varela.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Gloria, and all you other ones I don't know. Okay. My comment is, we're having some big, major problems on the other side of the tracks. And number one issue, every time I call and make a complaint to the Sheriff Department, they never get back with me. The only time they got back with me was yesterday, and this been going on for seven months. Now, you know, I left message with a receptionist at the Sheriff Department. I've gone up there numerous times, and they said, "He'll get ahold of me. I would like to speak to the captain." They never, ever got back with me. I had to come up here the other day, and I spoke to your secretary, and that was the only time I got response. And furthermore, we had a murder in front of, in my yard. Now, I called up the Sheriff Department the first time, and, you know, there was gunshots, everything. Sheriff Department came, but they didn't do anything. They didn't even go inside the house to check. There were six children. These are new people that just moved into my neighborhood, and it's bringing our neighborhood down. Now, around our neighborhood of each of this house, we have four children in one corner. We have three on the other. We have four more across the street, and then you have us, my sons, and four other elders. And when gunshots rang out, you know, what I was afraid of, them getting shot. And that's not right. So Sheriff Department didn't do anything at that moment, and I told them, they're on Section Eight, I think, and I said, "They're bringing in undesirable people into our neighborhood. We've seen teenagers drinking, smoking pot, and among other things, and this is wrong." You know? So nothing happened the first time, only gunshots. The second time, in front of my house, there was eleven shots. They shot this kid point-blank.
Ten seconds.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Point-blank, right through the window, boom, 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 boom. That poor kid hit the curb, hit the fire hydrant. Matter of fact, I need a fire hydrant. And then spun around, tore my gates, the fence, my trailer, travel trailer, they hit and damaged my parts cleaner. All kinds of damages were done. You know, I went to the sheriff's station again to see if I could get a report if he had insurance. You know, when I called 911, this child, he was seventeen years old, he was laying there with his brains all over the place. You have...
Okay. I don't want to cut you off, but time is up, but I think it's really important that our police chief is sitting back there.
Yeah, I spoke to him.
I'm positive he will have, he will contact you, or someone will contact you.
He did. He sent the sergeant, and he came and listened to me. And, you know, but we have a lot of problems. This other problem is the homeless. There's too many wrongdoings over there. We have all these good groups that want to help them, but they don't want to help themselves.
Okay. Okay, that's another subject we'll discuss sometime. You know, you can call me. I am going to have to cut you off because I've let you, I know this is an emotional issue. It's a serious issue. I'll let you go longer because it is important to you, it's important to us. But Chief Luchia will be contacting you. I'm sure, if not after the meeting, he certainly will have more follow-up, because we also will get a follow-up. They have to do their work, and they do a great job, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay. Thank you. But I would like for the captain or chief, whoever, to come and contact me. I left my number numerous times, and, you know, we have to sit down and talk.
Okay. We've got your message, Ruben.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point in time, I have no cards, and so we will continue here. We have, the individual did not come in yet. There are no items at the time for the Library Board of Trustees, no items for the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. For Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, we have item, Agenda Item Number Four, Consent Calendar.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Successor agency to the redevelopment agency, no items at this time. Joint Powers Financing Authority, no items at this time. Victorville Water District, Agenda Item Number Five. And this is the companion to Number Ten. Just one second. And so we will have a, this is a public hearing, and we will tie those items together. Is that okay, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay. At this point in time then, we will have the public hearing with the Victorville Water District. This is for City County Joint Resolution Number VWD-13-001, Resolution Number VWD-12-002. And I believe I have two cards on this item, or did I get them wrong? Hang on. I got cards here. Nope. Six, next item. I have no cards. Anyone want to speak on that item? Did you want to speak on that item? Six. Yeah. This is, this is Item Number Five and Ten. Dorothy, if you'd come up. Dorothy Miller will speak on Item Number Five.
Oh, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have a little problem with this, where we put letters in here on Number Five, if I come to it. We have adoption of revolution number VWD-13-001. I think we should have that written out, what it is, because that's confusing. You give these numbers, and people don't really know what it is about. And the same thing, now we've got Number Six, is a public hearing. Can I go ahead with the other ones that I want?
Well, Number Six, we're not there yet, so if you would stay with Five and Ten, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I wanted to talk on that. I'd like to talk on the storm drains, on Five. I don't feel, we should be worrying about storm drains with these builders, because they put them in, and where do they go? Nowhere. The water goes nowhere. They have, they're, they have to put the storm drain in. That's they have to do. But it goes nowhere. You don't have a place for it to empty. So I don't think that's really right either. I think we need to get the storm drains going, get it going somewhere, wherever it's supposed to be going, not just out there collecting mosquitoes and everything else that goes along with it. Now, we all pay for storm drain fees. Where is this money all going to? As you know, we have a lot of water over in our area, and we've got some nice little ditches over there. Matter of fact, I'm working on the corner of my property now to keep the water out of there. I mean, this is, this is not good. We're paying money for nothing. We're getting no help. We're not getting things done, and the housing, now they start building again, we're going to get some more storm drains that don't go nowhere. And where does the water run? Down the street, down through the big ditch we have over there, and then down across the neighbor's yard, down to Bear Valley Road, and floods Bear Valley Road out again. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, if you're going to make them put the storm drain in, get it to go somewhere. I don't know where you're going to get it to go, but get it to go somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, Dorothy, thank you. If there's no other speakers, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. I'm sorry, did, Mr. Hanson, I'm going to call on you as soon as we finish this item, Sean McGlade, does this raise any of the fees, or does this establish policies? Five and Ten.
It's twofold. There are fee increases for some of the items and fee, new fees that were established for services that were provided, but the city, I mean, the Water District did not charge a fee for that particular service. Some Water Districts will basically roll the cost of those services into the rates, and what we're trying to do here is separate it out such that the person that is being provided the service pays for that service and thereby hold back on, you know, that cost being rolled into a rate.
Comments from the council members?
If, Sean, you indicated that this is some sort of fee increase, but it has no fiscal impact on the budget. I don't understand.
The, some of the fees were in place, some were not. Some are new fees. We just haven't projected the additional revenue that would be received from those fees. We're very close to the end of the fiscal year.
But, to your point, is this a fee increase on those fees that existing ratepayers pay?
The...
And if so, could you point me to wherein this document tells me that?
Well, the, there are fees that cover specific services that didn't exist before.
And that I get. That's understandable. I'm talking about existing fees.
Yeah, the existing fees, I believe, were the three fees, twenty-five dollars. They did exist. What we're doing is adding to the scope of services for which we charge a direct fee for that service.
So, in other words, the existing fees haven't increased. All you're doing is charging for things that we didn't charge for before.
Or we charged at cost.
Oh, okay.
And in, some of the items, we charged at cost. I think they're listed there. We're turning that into a fixed fee. That makes it more efficient to administer.
So basically, what you're saying is, we still charge for them, we're just now establishing a fee that is, relates to what we were charging.
Some yes, and some no. Some are brand-new services that the state has mandated that we require backflow devices to be in place on new construction, and then those backflow devices have to be certified on an annual basis. And that is record-keeping that we have to do, for which we receive no additional revenue. We're proposing that we have a fee direct to that service provided, and that didn't exist before. That is a brand-new fee.
Okay. Thank you.
I, before we have further comments from the council. I had received a call about which ones were the new fees and so on, and I looked for an analysis that would have shown current proposed, current proposed. I couldn't find it, so I sat down and went through this, and I got to a point where I couldn't determine which ones were the fees and which ones were not. I don't know about the other council members, but I would really like to see a one-page analysis of the new fees and the percentage of the increase before I'm willing to vote on this. Comments from the council?
I think that that's appropriate. I, as much as I think Sean's answered my questions here tonight, it still is somewhat confusing. What is an increase? What isn't an increase? What is new? What isn't new? And, you know, for those of us that may be opposed to any fee increase, it's very difficult, based upon what we've been provided, to understand exactly what we're looking at here as new fees versus what you're just establishing based upon what you actually charged previously, as well as what fees existed that are now increasing. And so I think that that would be a good thing for the council to have. If nothing else, it just establishes exactly what you're trying to do. Whether there's a fee increase or not a fee increase, I think, is important from my perspective. But for the rest of the council, I think it's just good for us to be able to see, you know, what you've been charging. I mean, quite frankly, if you've been charging a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a particular service, and you're proposing to charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars, then to me, that's not a fee increase. It's exactly what you've been doing. All it is, is establishing a fee for that service. But that's, that's part of the thing that I don't, I don't see in this document, nor do I think Mayor Cox does. We can't really determine that.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, I think we understand your focus on the fees. To defend staff a little bit, this item really is, for us, more about the procedures and policies and things that are put in place. The fees is a little bit more... The fees is a little bit more of an afterthought. We'd be happy to update the agenda item, continue the public hearing to the May 7th. We've got another wider, water item up next, item number six, that will be continued to that meeting as well. Uh, if that pleases the council, we can make those changes.
Doug, I'm wondering if, or, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if it makes sense to separate the fee issue from the policy issues, because I, I don't think any of us have concerns about the policy goal you're trying to accomplish here. But there's some concern about confusion on fees. Does it make sense to...
It, we actually have already done that, to a certain degree. We, uh, two weeks ago, or maybe it was four weeks ago now, we brought forward three different items. One was connection fee costs, one was administrative policies, and a few little fees, and then the third one is rates. Uh, rates is the next item that has been continued to May 7th. That will, we need, we will need some sort of decision on, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. Certainly, we can, I think we can call it out better, uh, if, if that's the important issue for the council, what exactly is happening with those individual fees. Uh, I suspect once you see that, you'll, you'll realize that there's not, that's nearly not a tremendous change. It's more about just getting everything in sync, so...
Well, and, and I agree. I just think that that, that part's important, and...
Mm-hmm.
I, I agree with Councilmember Kennedy. If we can separate the two, um, it would allow us to do what staff needs to do with respect to the policy, but with respect to the rates, uh, have a different discussion.
What I'll do is, I, I mean, the information is there, the, um, the existing resolution establishing these existing fees is there, but what I'll do is, I'll pull it all together. Uh, there was, um, a list of the new fees, and a comparison with other agencies, and what, I'll add the existing fees to that column, and it should be very straightforward.
That's what I was thinking, Sean.
I, I appreciate staff doing this, but I did read that exhibit. They didn't say that these were going to be adopted. It was an exhibit, and there's an exa-study, but it didn't clearly point out which one is a new fee, which one is an increase in fee, and which one is the same. I never could determine that from reading this document, so... If staff would provide that, we've concluded the public hearing, close it. I don't see any reason to continue the public hearing. Is there any reason legally?
There would be, the better course of action would be to continue it, because in case you get slightly different information at the next meeting, the public would want an opportunity to comment on that.
So do I. Since no one has left the, the meeting, it's appropriate then to open the he, hearing and then continue items number five and 10 until the next regular scheduled meeting of the City Council.
Correct.
Then the chair will, as all for a motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia, to continue the public hearing on items number five and 10 to the May 7th meeting. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
The next item is, uh, item number six, and this has indicated that it's going to be continued. However, I have two individuals that want to speak on that, and so before I call you up to speak, uh, on that item, uh, I had indicated to Mr. Hanson, Chuck, are you, I saw you, yes, um, he wanted to speak, uh, on this bike to work. He'd made arrangements way, well ahead of time. He indicated that he couldn't be exactly on time, so as a courtesy to Mr. Hanson, we're going to allow you to come forward and give us three minutes of your wisdom.
We want to thank you for allowing us to do this. My name is Chuck Hanson, and this is my lovely wife, Pat Hanson. And this is the eighth year we've had this bike ride. And I have, I'm going to give the city clerks some flyers, and, uh, to pass out to you. And then also, from one of the bicycling magazines, some information about the economic benefits that bicycling can bring to a community, and even if people don't like bicycles, they should be interested in that part.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. We just flew in from Hesperia. The Tour to Apple Valley organization, we are now our own nonprofit organization, and we are sponsoring the bike ride that we're promoting this evening. It's a ride on Bear Valley Road that starts out at the Lowe's parking lot in Victorville, west of the 15 freeway, going down Bear Valley Road to Just French Marketplace in Apple Valley, to the U.S. Bank Building, where the bank manager is going to have, uh, goodies, water and/or fresh foods and so forth for the riders. The ride takes place on Monday evening, May 6th, at 6:00 P.M. As Chuck said, this is our eighth year. We have in the past had mayors of the different communities and councilmembers of the different communities ride with us, and we anticipate a good support from all of you. And I'd like to leave, somewhere in your community, flyers to advertise.
So you can leave those with the clerk?
Okay, and thank you again for your time.
Once again, Monday, do you mean?
Monday, May 6th.
What time?
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M.
Basically, the only requirement is that each rider wear a helmet. We've notified the Sheriff's Department in Hesperia, in Victorville, in Apple Valley. They are all aware, and they all look forward to the riders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, actually, Mr. Mayor. Do you provide a bus to get back to your car? Or do we have to ride back at our own risk?
Well, you're riding at your own risk. We're not taking any responsibility, Mr. Robertson. Uh, we have, uh, we don't have a bus. We haven't got that kind of money, just like Victorville doesn't have that kind of money. But we will have people who, like us, we have an SUV, we have a bike rack, we have enough room that we could take, uh, transport riders back to their vehicle, wherever it might be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We can make arrangements.
Yeah, if you'll show up, we'll take care of it.
I will be there.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hanson, thank you.
Okay, we're hoping to see all the mayors and mayor protems, in fact, all the council members. Thank you.
Uh, back to agenda item number six. Even though this is going to be continued, uh, Dorothy Miller, Norman Miller, do you want to speak on that, or do you want to wait until next regular meeting when this
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Norman Miller, and I just wanted to make a couple, a couple of comments. One of them goes back to five, and they're talking about fees and things. Uh, one thing to remember is, if you don't have a fee or a charge, and you create one, that's raising a fee. So some of that back and forth, number five, I think was confusing. But remember, no fee to a fee is a raise. And my comment is on number six, which, um, I don't think everybody agree with me on this, but, uh, they're talking about raising the fees, and I'm just thinking about, uh, the people today still aren't in good shape compared to like, five years ago or so that. And I think this Water District has some money now. I don't know what they plan on doing with it, but maybe that could be a kind of a buffer for raising the fees on water rates, because I think a lot of people can't really afford them as much as we'd like them to. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. At the next regular meeting, when this is continued to, I'm sure there'll be a lively discussion on that item at that time.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I could add a bit of a clarification to that, actually. Um, this item, uh, the last two years, has been a continuance of, uh, no fee increase, actually. There was a, an ordinance that was adopted, I believe it was in, uh, late 2010, that included automatic increases to fees. The last two times it's come before the City Council, the City Council has voted to, uh, not increase the fee, even though it was previously approved. So, uh, this item actually will, it, we, staff is currently studying to see if we have the ability to, to do that a third time, or if there is actually a need for it to, to go up as previously determined.
Okay. There'll be additional information coming from staff on this item?
Yes.
And the resolution? Okay, thank you. This is continued then until the next regular scheduled council meeting? Item number seven is to be removed, is that correct, from the agenda? Or did I get it?
Yes, that's correct. That is the request.
That is correct. Now, is it to be continued, or simply removed?
Simply removed at this time.
Simply removed, all right. Item number eight, this is, um, this is underwritten communication to the Water District, award of contract to Pyramid Building and Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $175,210 for the relocation of a large diameter water main in the intersection of Seneca Road and Cobalt Road.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item number nine, Victorville Housing Trust Consent Calendar, agenda item.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEchrin. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item number 10 was combined with item number five, continued to the next regular scheduled City Council meeting. Agenda item number 11 is a consent.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull, um, 11D. Got a couple of questions.
Okay. Any other requests from the council members? Then the chair will pull 11D for a separate discussion, and we need a motion for 11A, B, C, E, and F.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, Adele, do you want to handle these? You know me.
Councilmember Kennedy, just for clarification, I need a vote from, from you for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure you'll be the one to answer, but, but I'm noticing that sanitary and sewer revenues, I'm on page four of the quarterly report, sanitary and sewer is 59% of budget, so it's well above budget on revenues, and it's 36% of budget on expenses. So we've taken in a lot more revenue than we've had expenses. Why, why do you suppose that would happen?
You know, I don't have that information right now, but I can get that for you.
Okay, that, that would be good. And the other one was on the airport debt service. This one kind of surprised me. We're right at 50% on revenues, and we're at 44% on, uh, the debt service expense.
And that's because, you know, the expense part, the interest part is there, but the, the principal payments, you know, the three, there's about $3 million worth of principal payments that wasn't included there, that reduces long-term debt.
It comes later, okay. Yeah, if, I'd just be interested in that sanitary sewer, if anyone else would like to know. That's all I had, thanks.
Well, and I, if I could just back that up, it's good to see this again. I know the transfer and, and moving to a new system has, has caused a delay in this, but, uh, it is helpful to the City Council to have this, so thank you.
If it's sufficient to receive the explanation, then it would take a separate action to approve it, since it was approved from the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEchrin. Councilmember Kennedy, may I get a vote from you? Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Agenda item number 12 is information only, but, agenda item number 12, the City Council has received a separate communication from Councilmember Vias. I just received that tonight, when I came in. I haven't had a chance to read that, but I will do so. I know that all the council members will. In fact, if the council members have already read it, you're way ahead of me. There was a request for additional information from our city manager, and, uh, Mr. Roberts, did you have a chance to read this request?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to make comment on this, if I may.
All right. Uh, councilmember? Kennedy?
Councilmember Vias has, has, uh, provided this memo with a written request for, uh, more information. She's asked that the city manager provide her with additional responses to the grand jury report. First of all, and she knows this, uh, the city manager takes instruction from the entire council, not from a single member, so her request really requires our agreement, uh, for the city manager to, to go forward on this. But I also want to say that I completely disagree with this request. We have responded to the grand jury report, and I think that's enough. The city has wasted a substantial amount of time and treasure dealing with the grand jury. After four years and well over a million dollars of taxpayer money, both at the county and the city level, the grand jury report was a, in my opinion, was a seriously defective product. Uh, I think we got a shabby, shabby return on that million-dollar investment. And I'm just opposed to spending any more of the manager's time or city staff time going back over these issues that we have already responded to. So that's, that's my feeling on this.
Comment by the council members?
Um, well, and I agree with Councilmember Kennedy, but at the same time, I, I don't have any issue with her asking these questions. My, my thing is, is that if I have these questions, I'm going to go to our city manager and, and ask him in person. I don't need to do it here on the dais. If I, if I feel that, uh, that it needs to, to come out in that form, then I guess I would ask it here, uh, at this level. But, um, I've never had an occasion where I asked our city manager, whether it's Doug Robertson or, or Jim Cox prior to him, uh, for information that they didn't provide it to me. So I think that, that the appropriate thing would be to just ask our city manager for the information.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have not had a chance to review the memo, um, although I am aware of it. Um, and my custom in practice is that if, anytime I receive, uh, requests for information from any council member, if it's information I have readily available, I provide it. If it's something more like a report, I will advise you that, uh, the appropriate way to ask for that would be to bring it up at a council meeting, get the consensus of the council, at least three members, to request the report, and I'm, we're happy to, to do that work. But, uh, generally speaking, we, we don't. In fact, more than generally, we simply won't, uh, act off of one individual council member's request for, for a report that's going to take any significant amount of staff work, because it's inappropriate to do so.
And, and, Mr. Robertson, I would agree with you on that, but I, I know on several occasions where I've come to you or our former city manager and said, hey, I've had, I have this question.
Mm-hmm.
And if you didn't have the answer right then, you'd get it for me.
Absolutely.
So, what would be, yeah, and you would do that for any council member.
Yes.
That's, that's my point.
And yes, he has. Um, I had several questions on the same issue, and I met with, uh, Mr. Robertson on Monday, and, uh, he went over the entire, uh, well, the, uh, all the questions that I had, and he answered them very clearly, and, uh, I think I have a much better understanding of the, uh, report. Thank you.
I think there's a, a total of 21. I just reviewed it quickly on, on my screen here. I think there's a total of 21 items that are mentioned in the grand jury report, and all but five of them, or should say only about five of them, uh, still require some action from the city at this point. Uh, most of it is completed at this time, and we are diligently working to, to get it all completed, uh, by the end of the fiscal year in those cases.
Well, I, I know that you will provide, courtesy that you provide to all the council members, and if there's questions raised by any member of the council, they'll direct that to you. You will respond accordingly, as you always have done, and if there's any questions left over, City Council can discuss it, uh, for whatever the appropriate council action would be at that time. Uh, this is information only. This is a memorandum from one of our members to the whole council. I would be comfortable in referring this to Mr. Robinson. I, I know that you will be meeting with, uh, Councilmember Vias, and that'll probably handle it. So, thank you for, for that. Is there any other questions from the council member on item number 12? Um, agenda item number 13 was removed, or to remove that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Agenda item number 14, written communication, City Victorville Council Meeting, Adele Mosier, this is County of San Bernardino and the City Victorville Property Tax Administration Fee Release and Settlement Agreement. Mr. Robertson, do you want to comment on this?
Uh, just briefly, uh, this, uh, item is, uh, an interesting one. Um, the County of San Bernardino, as well as nearly every other county, uh, in the state, uh, in 2006, '07 timeframe, uh, raised the administrative fee that they charged for the processing of property tax. Um, that was actually right around the same time that Victorville began receiving property tax. Previously, we'd been a no-property tax city, so I don't know that anybody in the finance department at the time even knew that the piece had gone up, because they previously hadn't been collected from us. So, um, at, at some point after that, uh, the City of Alhambra sued the City of Los Angeles in order to, uh, recover those fees, because they disagreed with the, with them being raised. Here we are, six years later... Here we are, six years later, we finally have a judgment that, in fact, the counties that raised the fees did so inappropriately. There is a statute of limitations, we believe, the law is somewhat vague or mixed on this. We believe there's a statute of limitations of three years. In this case, the county has offered to go back that entire three years for that statute of limitations, and rather than continuing to fight over interest or potentially a longer term, staff is recommending that we accept the settlement offer for the three years of payments that were collected inappropriately.
So, your recommendation is for the council to adopt the agreement?
Yes.
Approve the agreement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from the council members? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcrin. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item 15, Presentation of a Request to Approve Award to Omnis Incorporated for the Payment Management Program Contract Consisting of the Inspection Collection of Field Data for the City. No questions, we're open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
For information, the budget amount is for this is $37,650. That's the budget amount. Fiscal impact, 37,650. Agenda item number 16. Request to adopt Energy, Adopt Resolution 13-009 in support of petition to the California Energy Commission. Any comments to Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I do have a question. I know that this was already previously submitted. Have you received any response?
We have received a, not an official response, but the response that we've received has been favorable from the staff of the California Energy Commission. At this time, it appears that this item is going to be before the commission in early June, I think June 7th or 10th, and staff will need to travel to Sacramento to answer any questions that they may have. At this point in time, the item that's in front of you is simply a resolution of support for your own petition. I would like to call out Janelle Davidson, my staff member in my office, who prepared the request for the CEC, and went out to stretch herself a little bit, learned a lot, and I'm pleased to say that she did a pretty darn good job on it. So, proud of her, and this item is going to be duplicated, hopefully, in all the surrounding cities in Barstow. I've made a request, just a courtesy request. I don't know how much impact it will have with the CEC, but I believe that most of our sister cities nearby are going to support our efforts in this matter.
Doug, there, the original estimate from our previous consultant, who was going to submit this request for us, their estimated fee on to do this was how much?
I want to say it was $250,000.
And we did this in-house with our staff?
That's correct.
At whatever that time cost us.
It was a lot less than that, yes.
Substantially less.
Less than $250,000.
Significantly less, yes, sir.
Well, my hat's off to you and staff and Janelle for getting this done, and, you know, I throw my full support behind this, and the fact that city staff was able to get this done, and I hope for a good decision from the California Energy Commission.
I hope that's forthcoming, yes.
Need a motion for Resolution Number 13-009.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Now accompanying this effort, Agenda item number 17.
Yes.
Request to approve the Energy Facility Compliance Fees for Victorville Two Hybrid Power Plant. The amount of the, it's totaling $90,377.
This $90,000 was not included in that $250,000. This is a separate fee. Can you explain why it covers three years and?
I can, actually, yes. This is a separate fee, as you mentioned, and this covers 2009-10 timeframe through this year. And during that time, as you're all well aware, that we were not having our best years as a city from a revenue standpoint, and we could not afford to pay those annual fees. At this point in time, in order for our petition to receive consideration, we need to be caught up on those fees. So, this would catch us up on the fees. There will be fees due in early July. Should the CEC extend our permit at some point very early in next fiscal year, we will owe another, I think it's $26,000 or so. This will get us caught up and actually allow the CEC to hear our petition.
You know, it's interesting to note, on the agenda item, the budgeted amount was $100,000, and I appreciate staff being prepared for this, and actually it coming in on our budget versus what we might have paid otherwise. But the fact that, you know, I don't have to ask the question of where you're going to get the money, you budgeted for it, so greatly appreciated.
You know, and the other, I guess I'll make this as a question to you, Doug, because I'm confident we'll be criticized for spending $90,000 on another failed power project. So, would you kind of explain what our rationale was for making this decision?
Certainly. Not that you've made the decision quite yet, but I can see which way this is going. The city has invested, the City and Airport Authority, through Airport Authority bonds, invested a total of $76 million into the Victorville Two Power Plant. $50 million of that was the GE contract that is now gone. It has been written off. We do have a somewhat, a small chance at recovering about $10 million of that if the power plant is ultimately built with GE equipment, but the remaining investment on the city's part that has not been written off is $26 million. What this item would do, should we be approved by the CEC, is investing $90,000 to give us five years to either build the plant ourselves, which is highly unlikely, would not receive a recommendation from staff, I don't think any of you would vote for that. It's actually going to buy us five years in order to wait for the energy market to return. At some point, as we begin to grow out of this recession, which we are, there will be a need for power, and ultimately, somebody will want to build a power plant, and this will be a still permitted plant until 2018, and at some point, somebody will offer us something for the development rights. We are hopeful that someone will offer us at least the $26 million that we've still got invested. The closer we get to a power crisis, the more likely that we would get the full $26 million back. And in fact, the closer we get to a power crisis, which California tends to deal in crises modes fairly often with power, there is some likelihood, I don't want to put a percentage on it, probably small, but there's some likelihood that we could actually make more than the $26 million invested. So, essentially, what this $90,000 is buying you is five years to get your investment back.
And if we don't spend the $90,000?
Then we will be writing off $26 million in the audit this year.
We would lose it. If I felt for a moment that this was a waste of time or throwing good money after bad, I don't think anybody up here would vote for this. And while it's a substantial amount, it's a small price to pay for five years of insurance. No further question, chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcrin. Councilmember Garcia, may I get a vote from you?
Her screen's not.
Her screen says yes, but it doesn't, it's not registering for something.
Okay, if it's a yes vote, I can enter it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Agenda item number 18. Settlement Agreement, City Victorville. I'm just going to ask the city attorney to comment on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cox. This is a settlement agreement with one of the last property acquisitions related to the Nisqually-Lamese interchange. The city would be acquiring or acquiring fee title to portions of the property that we've actually already built portions of the realigned Mariposa Road on. The settlement amount is a total amount of, where is it here?
That was the number, I couldn't find.
Yeah, the monetary compensation is a total sum of $650,000, of which about $383,000 has already been deposited. In addition, however, through the ingenuity of your Public Works Director, we managed to save some costs by providing for the transfer of properties that we own, portions of what are going to be the abandoned Mariposa Road, to add that into the mix and transfer that to the property owner. The property owner originally was seeking $2.1 million, so we believe this is a very good settlement for the city.
This has been discussed by the council in the past. Is there any questions? No further questions? The recommendation is to approve the settlement agreement.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
The number item, item number 19.
Excuse me, Councilmember Garcia is?
Her screen's not showing the ability to vote.
What is your vote?
Yes. It's a yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Agenda item number 19 is a discussion for the establishment of the Citywide Lighting Assessment District, rescission of the Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two, and additional appropriation of $50,000 to engage the services of assessment district consultant. Mr. McGlade or the city manager?
Mr. McGlade will be giving a brief presentation on this item.
With the emphasis on brief?
Yes.
I get it. First of all, I'd like to give thanks to a staff member who did a tremendous amount of work on this, Corey Pruitt. We did a presentation last year to, it was actually the previous city council. The direction at that time was to provide information associated with the possibility of a citywide street lighting assessment district. I'll quickly go through some slides that were presented back at that time, and for the most part, it's dealing with just some statistics and some history. As you can see, there's, you know, almost 7,000 streetlights that the city has to pay Southern California Edison to operate and maintain. In addition, there's 116 traffic signals that we either operate completely or participate in some shared signals, Caltrans County in their upkeep and maintenance. The, back in 1977, there was an assessment district for street lighting formed, similarly later than that, in 1986. Both of those districts, though, basically terminated when, in the '96-'97 era, Prop 218 passed, and the only revenue source left to the city at that time was the ad valorem tax, which is collected in what we call SLD One, Street Lighting District One. In the '07-'08, right at the tail end, unfortunately, of the housing boom, there was a recognition that we were falling behind on revenues versus the expenses, and the formation of assessment districts for new developments was being required. It had been, we started requiring it earlier than this, but they didn't get implemented until the '07-'08 era. There are over 6,000 parcels that are currently being assessed, an amount of roughly $27 each year to pay for the streetlights, and that is in the districts that they belong in. The next slide may not come out all that well, but the bottom right map is the map that indicates the Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two. That was the recent one formed in the '07-'08 era. And as you can see, it's scattered all over the place, but that is the only additional revenue source that the city has to the ad valorem tax. This is just a combination of the ad valorem tax revenue and the Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two revenue, and as you can see, the expenses have just been soaring. The revenues, while they've been chasing after it, never caught up, and then obviously, the big blow was when property assessed values fell severely. That had a direct impact on the ad valorem revenue. Basically, the shortages are caused by that loss of revenue from the ad valorem. The inequities in the assessment district are just basically that it was new housing development that was paying for the streetlights that they were adding to the citywide system. Commercial, multi-residential, industrial parcels are not currently paying any assessment for the cost of operating and maintaining street lighting. The Prop 218, the loss of those other two districts because of that, that was a major blow. There had been reserves built up, and that's what's been sustaining the deficit in the years since those districts were dissolved. Just to give you an idea of the costs of electricity soaring, the yellow represents the electrical costs, the red represents the total costs to the district, and this is just for the Street Lighting District Number One, the ad valorem. The gap between the yellow and the red is just simply the administrative costs of the assessment district, and as you can see, in recent years, that has been narrowed down to a very minimal amount to enable the revenues to, or the deficit to be minimized. Looking at the budget, in the top right, we've shown two fiscal years. That's the sum of both the ad valorem tax revenue and the Street Lighting Assessment District Number Two revenue. So, we're talking about 1.1 million in this current fiscal year, of which we're only receiving $600,000 in revenues. There's a deficit of $500,000 that is going to grow if we, if everything remains the same going into next year. The other two below that are just the individual, the SLED Two, as we call it, brings in somewhere between $170,000 and $180,000 in revenues. The big problem is the ad valorem tax is only $450,000 annual revenue. That's what has dropped significantly with the falling property values. The options that were presented before were to turn off, the easiest way to put it is turn off every other streetlight, but in practice, that's probably going to amount to something in the order of 60% of the streetlights. The impact of that is that there would be 3,000 streetlights less operational. There would be an upfront cost to Edison to implement that plan of $133,000, resulting in the option one in the first budget year would still have a deficit of $100,000. That does recover in the second year in that option, simply because the upfront cost of $133,000 is a one-time implementation fee from Edison. However, when times get better and the city has money again, if they want to turn those lights back on again, there is another $148,000 fee associated with that turn-back-on charge, if you will. The second option presented then? The second option presented then was to get into a program where the streetlights are only on for a six-hour period. Looking at those numbers again, the initial cost for implementation of that is 327,000 dollars, and as you can see, looking out into the first and second years, that's not being recovered under that option. It would just simply function as six hours of operation, and it could start at, you know, dusk and go on for the next six hours, and then they would switch off.
Sean, that means from midnight till dawn, there are no lights on the street.
That's what I was trying to get to, is you can choose the hour at which they switch off.
It would vary a little, but...
Yes, I mean, you can have them on until midnight, or you could have them not coming on until nine o'clock, going off at 3:00 a.m. It's just a six-hour period, it's just referred to as, you know, dusk plus three hours.
Fortunately, no crime occurs between midnight and dawn, so that wouldn't be a real problem, right?
The third option that we could not really provide good information to the council the last time was a citywide assessment district. We have spent an enormous amount of time, especially Corey, in trying to gather together information that would look at a complete equitable citywide assessment district, where the commercial, industrial, multi-residential, as well as the residential, even vacant land would pay some varying levels of contribution towards the assessment district. It started to get quite complex, and now we put together a spreadsheet to demonstrate that. One of the other rationales that we used was that the ad valorem could be used to offset the total cost. The assessment district may only be used for special benefit, and we would offset the total cost of operation of the streetlights and the traffic signals by the revenue from the ad valorem tax, and then the special benefit to the residents that would be distributed by all of the, what we call, equivalent dwelling units, that would be distributed amongst all of the various categories and land uses. It would be required to go through a Prop 218 assessment district process, where the voters get to, they will receive a ballot and they return the ballot with their votes in favor or against the proposed assessment district. I probably jumped ahead a little bit. The two findings necessary for the formation of the assessment district would be that special benefit finding and the proportionality, and that's where it started to get very complex, but we have, I would say, about a 90% completion of that data for you. The methodology was basically to take a look at all of the different land use categories, and basically, an equivalent dwelling unit would be what a single-family resident home would pay. As we get into the different land uses, there would be an assignment of different EDUs to that land use, and then depending on whether it's either just entitled, or it's vacant and zoned for that, or it's a fully operational, commercial, industrial, then there is a factor that's also been built into that to try and get some equity into that. We got inspiration from the city of Yorba Linda. They, in fact, have not just a citywide street lighting assessment district, but they have it for landscaping and open space as well, and that is something that, you know, it could be something that the city might be interested in looking into in the future. Right now, all we're doing is taking a look at the street lighting alone, but there are some prominent cities that have gone this direction. And that's the extensive spreadsheet, there's a whole lot more to it than that, but that is the summary of how we would evaluate an equitable citywide distribution of the cost of maintenance of the entire city's street lighting and traffic signal maintenance.
I have a card, Nancy Jackson, one moment, we're going to have a couple of questions. Is there any direct questions of Mr. McGlade? Are you finished now?
Just a couple of more slides, if that's the way.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. The bottom line here is that the ad valorem would be used to offset and contribute towards the general benefit, and then the special benefit would be distributed amongst the total number of EDUs. So the last slide had a total number of equivalent dwelling units throughout the city of 91,673. The total cost to operate the streetlights and traffic signals, less the ad valorem tax, comes to one, roughly 1.2 million, which would leave an estimated fee, this is preliminary at this stage, but this is our best effort to be giving, to be able to give you an idea of what that cost per single-family dwelling unit might be, at $13.05. The ones that are paying the assessment, it's less than half of what they're paying. This is an annual fee, this is roughly a dollar a month for a single-family home. And this is just a summary of the three options that we presented, and we were available for questions.
Sean, this is a good presentation, I'd like to get a copy of that, if I could, I'd like to read it. Secondly, and you showed maps of different areas for the street lighting district, I make an assumption that it has been the council's policy that every development, building, a commercial, single-family, multifamily, industrial, and track automatically pays the street lighting assessment district as a requirement, a council requirement of their approval?
Only for the residential, that's something that was just recently, when I say recently, it was probably in '06, '05 or '06, where it was required on residential only. That's not something that has been yet required on commercial or industrial.
Okay, well, that'd be interesting, no, why not? Secondly, in those areas, that map where you had divisions, do we have single-family housing areas that are not paying anything?
Absolutely.
And how did that occur?
They predated the, whichever assessment, they may have been in the older assessment districts that terminated, dissolved, you know, when Prop 218 kicked in.
So, but people who are paying in assessment district, if this goes through, will have about a 50% reduction on what they annually pay?
Correct.
And people who aren't paying then will pay half the fee that the current people are paying that are in the district?
Correct.
Okay. Now, on these signals throughout the city, traffic signals, are they in any current street lighting district, or are they funded from another source of funds?
They're funded from Measure I currently, and we found that it's a total, totally appropriate expense to an assessment district would be to include the traffic signals, and that is going to be evaluated in the engineer's report that would be required should the council authorize moving on to the next stage of the formation of the citywide assessment district.
Every traffic signal has at least four streetlights mounted atop those?
That's correct.
And those are paid for out of Measure I?
Correct.
Okay, and that would continue?
No, that's what we're proposing, is to include all of the traffic signal operation and maintenance into the street lighting assessment district.
Why?
It's an appropriate use of an assessment district to finance the traffic signals.
Well, the traffic signals are there because of traffic, not because of people walking on the sidewalks. Why would that be transferred to assessments for property owners? Why wouldn't it remain with traffic, traffic-related, motor vehicle and loot tax, gas tax, or Measure I?
The, you know, you come to a street intersection on your way to work, that traffic signal aids that resident in getting to their destination.
Also, based upon the traffic counts, and based upon our residency, it aids far more people from outside the city than it does inside the city. That is a good thing, if they're coming here to work or they're coming here to shop, and what about the major intersections that are on a state highway? I'm assuming the state's paying for the signalization of all of those?
Yes, all we pay is for energy on the state traffic signal system. We don't operate or maintain them.
That's what I thought, okay. Before we get to council comments, unless it's pressing, I'd like Ms. Jackson, Nancy Jackson, to come forward, and then we'll get to the rest of the council members' questions of Mr. McGlade. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you. Mayor Caldwell and council, thank you for letting me afford the opportunity to speak on this very important issue, and from behalf of Southern California Edison, we recognize that cities have a particular issue with the streetlight and streetlight cost. I don't know if Mr. McGlade, his team, have had the chance to sit down and talk to an Edison major account representative or someone from our street lighting department, but I'd like to have that opportunity so that we can sit down with you and show you what is really available with regard to streetlights and some of the challenges that we've had to face with other cities and things that we've offered. We do recognize that we have had a rate increase of at least a composite rate increase of 7%, but there was some special considerations given, particularly for streetlights and streetlight issues, so if you haven't had the chance to talk to us, please let us at least sit down and talk to you so that we can really check out some of the figures and make sure they're, that you're getting everything that you should.
I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, council members?
Well, I think that would be appropriate before this council makes a decision, but I would like to point out and ask for our police chief to comment on, I mean, how difficult is it going to be to prevent crime between the hours of 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. with half the streetlights on in the city?
Good evening, everybody, I'll try to make it quick.
For the record, Sam, your name?
Sam Lucia, Police Chief, City of Victorville. Good evening, Mayor Cox, and it's not Mayor Caldwell, and other members of the council. Probably the two things that are most damaging or detrimental to a criminal is light and police, and if you, if you take one of those components away, the other one is going to have that much more difficult time addressing some of these issues. I was in the city several years ago when there was a major power failure, and sections of the middle city and downtown went totally dark, including streetlights, traffic signals, and power to homes. And let me tell you, when the lights go off, this place gets very dark, and it's hard to see anything, and it's hard to do anything, so if you want my opinion, light is one of the greatest and best deterrents to combat crime, next to having a police car parked in front of your house.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Couldn't agree with you more. Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, that's, that's what I expected to hear, and that's why I asked the question, and it goes to Councilmember Kennedy's point, but I think before the council does make a decision, I would think it would be, it would be good for staff to meet with Southern California Edison, or can that be a part of this process? Because I don't have a problem with you moving forward on the process, as long as that's part of the process.
Yeah, I, I think we can do that to refine the engineer's report.
Okay.
It can only get better, I would hope, Nancy, than, than what we've presented.
Then, I'm fine with moving forward on it. Obviously, you got to bring this back before us, I imagine, and before it goes to vote to the people.
Yeah, there are about five more steps in the assessment district process to get to a point where we can implement it. We have a target of August, whether we'll make it or not, I don't know, but that's the deadline for placing this on the tax roll.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I've had a few initial conversations, I was invited to a meeting with Edison that Nancy was at, where they addressed all the city managers from the high desert, and the focus at that time was more on our facilities and things, but we have made some contacts with the major accounts team on streetlights. It's not quite as lucrative as some of the other programs, but certainly if there's some opportunities there, we've begun exploring those at this point.
Okay, any questions, Mrs. Garcia?
No, no questions.
Mr. Mayor, just one, one question, Sean. I don't know if I'm confused or not, you've got a small number of households, as I remember the slide, I think it was in District One, paying an ad valorem tax? Was that one or two?
Actually, the ad valorem is collected citywide, but it is a very, very small amount. The original district when the ad valorem tax was implemented, my understanding is as the city grows, it's the same amount of money that's divided over a larger area, basically. So it diminishes, it's a very small portion of the property tax collected.
Yeah, property tax in San Bernardino County is goofy. Basically, what happens is, Sean's correct, the amount doesn't change, but they spread that amount for accounting purposes over the entire city, but in reality, if you go back to where it's collected at the front end, it's only from a very small portion of the city, and a lot of the others don't pay it. The reason why they do that is just to get average numbers for a citizen or a house in Victorville, but it doesn't actually increase over time. Everyone pays 1% towards that property tax, so how that 1% pie is cut up is sort of irrelevant to us.
Well, my question is, do we have some people paying the ad valorem tax and others not paying it?
And the answer is yes and no. At the front end of the process, a portion, everyone pays 1%.
Yeah.
And that is the ad valorem. At the front end of the county's property tax process, it comes in from a certain district, a certain area of the city, the original boundaries of the city. By the end of their machinations of property tax administration, for which they were charging us too much money for, that was an earlier item, it comes out and it's spit out of the process as everyone paying a little tiny bit, but it's a much smaller amount because that amount is spread out over the entire city.
But we don't have an inequity in the property tax people are paying that we have to adjust for?
Not in the ad valorem, but there is an inequity in the street lighting assessment district, where some are paying $27, others are paying none. Under the current accounting, assuming it remains the same, which it will be similar, then everyone would pay the, an equal amount of about $13.
This may be complicated when you go through all these details, but that simple principle is not complicated.
It's really not, it's really not. You're either going to get your amount cut in half, or you'll have to start paying $13 a year on your property tax.
A little over a dollar a month is a small price to pay to have the streets lit in the city, for safety purposes, for no other reason. But, I'm not going to make up my mind yet. If there are other questions, the item before the city council is to, twofold, well, authorize staff to prepare a resolution in intent, which certainly we need to, I guess is threefold, and then we, there'll be several steps that we enter into, I'm not going to go into those, but there'll be several different times that the council will be addressing this, and if we determine that it needs to be changed or it's bad, it can be halted, but at the present time, I think the staff should, I think the council ought to authorize staff to proceed, as in the recommendation.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern. How do you vote, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Item number 20, discussion of possible actions regarding items for the upcoming council agenda. Any council member, do you have items? I'm going to speak on behalf of Ms. Vias, who submitted the memorandum we talked to earlier, and rather than place that on the agenda for the full council, I'm going to refer that to Mr. Robinson. If that seems to be the direction of the council, are there any other, any other discussions on this item? Item 21, presentation of reports by staff or council members. Start with the city manager. Start with the city manager.
I shall refrain from comment at this meeting. I had three items last time, and I got razzed for it, so you get nothing from me tonight.
Oh, come on, tell me. Starting at my left, council--
I have none.
Mr. McEckern?
No.
Kennedy?
I'm going on vacation tomorrow. Lori, why aren't you? Where are you?
I don't take vacations because I don't want the crooks to find out there's no one in my house. Councilmembers, I ran out of agenda items. There's no further comments? This meeting is adjourned.